I'd like to bring this meeting to order tonight. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. 7:03 PM. Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019. Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11th Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Called to order, and we'd like to have a roll call.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Present. Now, those who would like to join with me, I would like to have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Those who can and are able, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome the Honorable Les Adams, right along with Mr. Pincet Shorter, and all others that I may have missed due to the volume of people that we have tonight. Thank you for showing up, all the citizens, to make your voices and concerns heard. We are thankful that you've taken an active part in local politics. Thank you so kindly. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to add fire and rescue nominations, Health Department carryover in the Resolution 2019-11-02 to matters of the work session.
Second.
All right. Let Mr. Scares make a motion. We have a second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Mr. Blackstock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barber. We have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda, is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Warren makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Miller. We have any discussion? Hearing none?
Let's get the second on the screen. All right, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Are we moving on to Item 9, Counselor, number 10?
We're going to do presentations, Item 8.
Okay. Presentations. Resolution. The Honorable Les Adams, how you doing tonight, sir?
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, for allowing me this opportunity in this forum to make this presentation tonight. And it's fitting that we do so here in this building because the person that we seek to memorialize is Edwin Randolph Shields, for whom the building is named, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman. And I would ask if it's appropriate at this time to call up the family of Mr. Shields. One of the opportunities I have as a member of the House of Delegates is to champion the memory of notable citizens in Pennsylvania County, and of course, Mr. Shields passed earlier this year. We were fortunate to be able to submit this resolution at the special session that was held in Richmond, and I have a copy of, I have the resolution to present tonight. And if you'll allow me, I will read this and then present it to Mrs. Shields. And this is agreed to by the House of Delegates, July 9th, 2019. Whereas Edwin Randolph Shields, a respected farmer, businessman, and member of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, who dedicated his life to community service, died on June 3rd, 2019. And whereas Edwin Shields lived in Dry Fork for more than 65 years, earning the admiration of his fellow residents for his skill as a tobacco farmer, he also worked as a property developer and oversaw the creation of several new subdivisions in the area. And whereas desirous to be of further service to the community, Edwin Shields ran for and was elected to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors in 1972, and represented the residents of the Blairs District for 19 years. And whereas among his many achievements in service to the residents of Pennsylvania County, Edwin Shields helped increase water and sewer access for homes and businesses in the Blairs District, and was instrumental in the expansion of the county courthouse, which was renamed in his honor. And whereas Edwin Shields volunteered his wise leadership to Carter Masonic Lodge, Number 323, Mount Herman Volunteer Fire and Rescue, and White Oak Community Center. And whereas a man of deep and abiding faith, Edwin Shields enjoyed fellowship and worship with the community as a member of Oakland United Methodist Church for more than 65 years, including 49 years as a member of the church's Administrative Council Board. And whereas Edwin Shields will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his wife of 63 years, Joan, his sons, Denny and Brian, and their families, and numerous other family members and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the House of Delegates hereby note with great sadness the loss of Edwin Randolph Shields, and be it resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for the presentation to the family of Edwin Shields as an expression of the House of Delegates' respect for his memory.
Thank you. He loved this county.
Mr. Adams, Ms. Shields, would you like to say something, ma'am?
I just wanted to say thank y'all, thank you for this. And he dearly loved this county and loved it all, the people of it, and worked hard with it.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Thank the whole family for your attendance tonight. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to outside events, I would like to call a small recess. Can we do that, Counselor?
Sure. Yeah, we have another presentation on Page 8.
Okay. We can, that'll be great. Ms. Vanderheide. Annual Report, Pennsylvania County Services. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening again. I am here before you tonight not as Kim Vanderheide, the Finance Director of Pennsylvania County, but as a board member and current Secretary of the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services. With great pleasure, I present to you our annual report for fiscal year 2019, and you all should have a copy of that before you. It's called "Moving Toward the Future." This year, our annual report theme is a message to the community about our preparations for the future as we meet our residents' needs. Simply titled "Moving Toward the Future," the information in our report outlines the ways that DPCS serves the citizens in Pennsylvania County and the citizens of Danville as a preferred provider of top-quality behavioral health, developmental disability, and prevention services. The unique cover of this year's annual report presents a collage of moving day activities as staff moved into the newly renovated and expanded main campus location on Hairston Street. This campus expansion allows DPCS staff to better serve our community. The variety and complexity of DPCS's services meet the needs of individuals with a behavioral health disorder, a developmental disability, or those who may be at risk. Moving toward the future of service provision, there are nearly 50 unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health Developmental and Prevention Services divisions. In the past year, DPCS directly served 5,488 individuals through 175,471 distinct service units within the clinical treatment programs in behavioral health and developmental services. Moving toward the future through our prevention services, DPCS is now providing a greater focus on prevention efforts across our community and reporting the increase in universal and environmental strategies meant to affect population change. With these efforts from school-based programs that impact multiple grade levels to campaigns that no longer focus on just a few individuals, but an entire population of individuals such as underage drinking among teens, DPCS impacted 24,980 citizens in Danville and Pennsylvania County. Tonight, I would like to highlight just a few of the incredible numbers and programs that DPCS staff facilitated in fiscal year 2019. DPCS works with infants, toddlers, children, adolescents, adults, and seniors, everyone in our community. Through treatment services or prevention programs, we connect with one in four residents of Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville, helping them move toward the future. Some of these programs are small, focused, and provide a very specific service with a very large impact, such as the Regional Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention or RASAP Youth Advisory Council. A group of teenagers from the six area high schools who worked with their peers to engage prom and graduating students in an "arrive live, arrive alive, don't drink and drive" campaign. Other DPCS programs are large and complex, providing life-changing services to individuals such as medication maintenance through agency psychiatrists, which improved services to several thousand individuals last fiscal year with a new scheduling system called "just in time." Individuals simply call in a week or so before they are due for medication refills and are scheduled an appointment with their provider within a few days. In our prevention division, DPCS partnered with the Virginia Healthcare Foundation to hire two outreach workers to aid residents of our community obtaining healthcare under Virginia's Medicaid Expansion Project. These workers serve the entire community, not just those in services with DPCS. Nearly 400,000 individuals in Virginia are eligible for healthcare coverage, and DPCS is excited to help the entire community find affordable healthcare. In our developmental and behavioral health services division, we began providing rapid access, also known as same-day access services, to aid those seeking services during walk-in program hours. Individuals receive an assessment that same day instead of possibly waiting weeks for a behavioral health or developmental assessment. From that assessment, the individual is connected with all available resources in the community that could most effectively and rapidly meet their needs. These are just a few examples of the nearly 50 unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health Developmental and Prevention Services. Moving toward the future with our people and places, renovations and expansion to our main campus completed in the last year has consolidated office and community-based services to one location and provides a one-stop facility to meet the needs of individuals of any age at any one site. Our residential and day program sites remain spread throughout our community, and we have a satellite location in Gretna to serve residents in the northern section of Pennsylvania County. DPCS is a workforce of 300 strong, composed of men and women who are passionate and dedicated in their work to help others live, work, and play in their communities at their maximum potential. Each one of the staff brings their unique passion, skill set, and focus that makes an impact each day on the lives of those we are honored to serve. DPCS also has a volunteer board of directors composed of 15 citizens dedicated to our community. Eight of those board members, including myself, are appointed by you, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, and the remaining are appointed by the Danville City Council. As I stated earlier, the staff at DPCS work every one in our community from infants to senior citizens. In fiscal year 2019, DPCS impacted 30,854 residents of the city of Danville in Pennsylvania County through 175,471 distinct units of service with additional universal and environmental prevention strategies. In closing, on behalf of our board of directors, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for appointing eight members from Pennsylvania County to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. It is our honor and our pleasure to serve the community in this capacity, and we appreciate your confidence and ongoing support. And Jim Beebo, our executive director, is here tonight to assist me with answering any of your questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Beebo, how you doing?
Keep up the good work.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to take the opportunity. I also serve on that board, and I'd like to thank this board for having appointed me there. It has been a great experience. I've been with them for several years now, and I'm always impressed with how professional and how efficient they are. Whenever we have a meeting, they've already crossed the T and dotted the I, and it's just a super run organization, and it's amazing when you get to see all of the things that they provide to our community. And it's just been a privilege to serve on that board, and I thank you for your leadership, Mr. Beebo.
Thank you. I appreciate it. If anybody's interested or is not aware of who we are, what we do, I'll leave the annual reports up here. Please grab one, and if you have any questions, just let us know. We're here to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beebo. I'll have to take a rain check on that because I know you've been talking to me for quite a while. Thank you. Item 9, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board, under hearing of the citizen shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his/her name and district in an audible tonal voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizen shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting, absent chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Number 10, Public Hearings. Rezoning Public Hearings.
I have, I have.
Pardon me, I, that's right, you exactly right, so we.
That's all right. All right, Mr. Chairman. The first citizen we have signed up to speak is Robin Schultz.
That's right, you have the list. You have the list.
My name is Robin Schultz. I'm in the Tunstall District. I'm here tonight not as a Democrat, not as a Republican, but as an American citizen. I'm the daughter of a proud WWII Marine and the wife of a proud US Army veteran. These two men, along with scores of others, fought and put their lives on the line to protect our freedoms, mine and yours. We don't have a gun problem in Pennsylvania County. We don't have a gun problem in the state of Virginia. We don't even have a gun problem in the entirety of the United States. We have a violence problem. No gun ever loaded itself. No gun ever took aim. No gun has ever pulled its own trigger. It's the humans who do that. Gun control would only rid law-abiding citizens of the means to protect themselves because the criminal element will always possess firearms. My right to bear arms is my constitutional right, and not one even my own government has legal right to attempt to suppress my Second Amendment rights to gun ownership. My right to bear arms, I'm sorry. As you can see, I'm one of the county's most vulnerable citizens. If necessary, I have a constitutionally protected right to own a gun and defend myself. I have no intention of sitting idly by and allowing the state of Virginia to remove my means of protection and strip me of my Second Amendment rights. The state of Virginia has no authority to attempt to override the Constitution of the United States. I applaud all of you as our Board of Supervisors for taking a stand for citizens' rights and taking steps to protect our freedom. Therefore, I would like to publicly endorse our Board of Supervisors in declaring Pennsylvania County as a Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second citizen we have signed up to speak is Eric Andrews.
My name is Eric Andrews. I live in the Dan River District. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing us out tonight. You know, one of the things I can say is I'm proud to live in the United States of America, and thank God for our Constitution, just like the First Amendment where we're allowed to peacefully assemble. But we know tonight that we're here to discuss the Second Amendment, which allows us to bear arms. And I believe as many people are here tonight that are here to keep and bear their arms not to be infringed. There was a bill introduced earlier this year, which fortunately was shot down, but due to the recent voting status, everything being Democratic, I believe the vote will, I believe the vote tonight should be yes to pass Pennsylvania County Second Amendment sanctuary due to the following. Delegate Rip Sullivan said, "This bill from earlier this year, which mirrors legislative steps taken in numerous states like Florida to California, will stop an individual from committing gun violence before a single shot is fired." Actually, California has some of the strictest gun laws, and in 2017, California had 3,184 firearm deaths. 2022 were from homicides. So that alone shows you, these laws simply don't work. Delegate Kathy Tran and Senator Adam Eben introduced legislation to ban the sale, purchase, and possession and transport of assault firearms in the Commonwealth. Now, this bill was also modified to add the definition of assault firearms to any firearm that is equipped with a magazine that holds more than 10 rounds of ammunition. I feel like if you paid attention to the wording in that, you'll see where not only sporting rifles are to be confiscated and banned, but also pistols will fall in that category as well. I also feel like this universal background checks is ridiculous as well. You know, I have three adult sons, and I'm gonna have to have them take a background check just to borrow my gun to hunt with? That's ridiculous. As an American citizen, ask you guys to search your heart and towards the Constitution, and know these laws are wrong, and to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and other board members, I thank you for this privilege of being able to speak here tonight. We all stood up a few minutes ago and gave a pledge of allegiance to that flag, which stands for our rights and our freedoms and our privileges that we are afforded by the Constitution of this country. And no one, state or federal level, should be able to erode our rights from that Constitution. A lot of people here fought for our freedoms to protect them, and that's what we're here for tonight. Now, a lot of people here didn't get to hear some of the comments that were made earlier by you, and I'm really proud to hear what you people had to say earlier. And that meant a lot to me to hear most of you here talk about what you did, and I won't go into that. That's immaterial. But the federal government is supposed to be for the people, by the people, but it seems to have gotten that it's the people for the government, even state government, it seems like recently. And if he's allowed to do in this state what he wants to do, then where will it stop? What guns is he gonna take next? It'll end up that we won't have any of them. Now, most of these people in the government's status probably never got to go hunting or fishing, or probably didn't even live in the country. I don't know. But they don't realize what they're doing to the rest of us, and we have that right and the freedom to be able to do what we're doing now. And we don't need that right taken away from us by any federal employee or federal government. As long as we're doing it by the rules, we live by the rules, and adhere to those rules, we shouldn't have to be punished by someone who doesn't know any better. And I hope that you will take the step in making this a sanctuary county for the citizens of this county and the people that are here tonight, and I appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally.
Next, we have Carol Dotson.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, thank you for meeting with us tonight, and I was in the meeting also this afternoon, and I think I know how this is going to go, but I would very much like to see Pennsylvania County become a sanctuary county for the Second Amendment. And so far as the red flag law, it may have good intentions, but my understanding of this is the due process will be temporarily suspended till some point in time when a court date may be set. A person may then meet the person that is accusing them of something, but what I am getting at, due process should always be here. You have your day in code before you are punished, because I understand compensation comes to start with, and then you may get your property back depending on how the settlement goes. Also, I'd like for you to think of the millions of men and women that swore oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States from all enemis, foreign or domestic. Now it appears the biggest threat we have to our Constitution is coming from this in, within this own country. And I, like I said, I would very much like to see you as supervisors send the word to Richmond that Pennsylvania County will become a sanctuary county for the Second Amendment. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Next, we have Will Pace.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Will Pace. I'm resident of Chatham Blair District, and as you, Mr. Chairman, mentioned, I am the mayor of Chatham, and I promise I'm not here to speak about signs on the roadway. I swear I'm not here to speak about that. But I'm here not speaking also as, I'm not here to speak as mayor of Chatham either. I'm here to speak as chairman of the Pennsylvania County Republican Committee. As one, you've heard the previous speakers from me have made excellent points about why Pennsylvania County needs to be a Second Amendment sanctuary, but I want to add one more food for thought for y'all, and I think it illustrates the point. Last Friday, the Pennsylvania County Republican Committee on its Facebook page did a poll. It's not a scientific poll, but it's a poll nevertheless that gauges the enthusiasm of It's not a scientific poll, but it's a poll nevertheless that gauges the enthusiasm of the county. Since last Friday, we had over 1,800 people answer this Facebook poll, and I know some of you have voted on that poll. I'm sure some people behind me have voted on that poll as well. And we knew what the margin was going to be. It was going to be high, but we didn't know how big the margin was going to be. As of 7:30, the percentage of people who said yes for Pennsylvania County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary is 99%. That's no joke. It's right here, 99%. And I'm very certain that at least 99% of the people here today support it as well. So it's great to see such a massive crowd today, especially so many people from Pennsylvania County, in strong support of this important resolution for Pennsylvania County to join counties like Patrick County, Campbell County, Charlotte County, and I think Franklin County today as well, and Apple Max County last night, to be Second Amendment sanctuary localities. And I want to give a special thanks to you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing this to be on the agenda, and also to Mr. Scares for sponsoring this resolution. And finally, I would like to invite everyone here today to come to our next Pennsylvania County Republican Committee, which is this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Chatham Train Depot in the town limits of Chatham. It's on 340 Wyhead Street. In fact, I have applications to join, and of course, as always, members of the Board, you're welcome to attend. And again, finally, I ask you, on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Republican Committee, to support this resolution. Let's make it a seven to zero vote. And finally, to end my remarks, as chairman of the Republican Committee, I'd just like to say, it's gonna be nice to have a majority Republican Board Supervisor. I love you all, though, but it's nice bragging rights. So thank you all. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We now have Bill McAnich.
McAnich.
I'm sorry.
That's as good as any teacher ever did.
Bill McAnich, I'm from the Callens-Grettona District. I'm here to speak tonight on the Second Amendment sanctuary. Following the election in November the 10th, we had the Virginia Democratic Party leaders crowing about how Virginia was now a blue state. Now, if you look at it area-wise, you'll see that we're about 90% red. It's just the cities can outvote us. It's happened before. It'll happen again. What I believe now, with the Democrats in control of the legislature, I think we will see that the governor's laundry list of gun control measures back on the agenda, and this time it's probably going to be more seriously considered. I think this is a serious problem. There are things on that laundry list that have absolutely nothing to do with gun violence. They happen to be things that are gonna disarm the general public. Now, the Constitution of the United States is a unique document. The preamble is, "We, the people," not the Congress, not the king, not the president. "We, the people." You go to the Second Amendment, we talk about the militia. In that day and age, militia was able was every able-bodied male between the ages of 18 and 60. Now, the militia would be every able-bodied citizen in the same age class. And what does that militia do? It ensures the freedom of the state. And why, how, and through, and why? By the people's right to keep and bear arms. We're not talking hunting here. We're not talking shooting sporting clays. We're talking the people's right to rise up and throw off an oppressive government. Do we have an oppressive government? Watch the news. Watch the Democratic debates and see what you think. We're going to confiscate all your AR-15s and all your AK-47s so you don't kill people with them. Well, we aren't doing anything about cars. We're not doing a whole lot about hospitals, where a lot of people die. There's a whole lot of things we're not doing about a lot of people dying. Going after the Second Amendment, things like assault rifles, which are semi-automatic weapons, one shot per pull of the trigger, no full automatic, which is a select-fire assault rifle. So I think the idea of Pennsylvania County becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary county is a good idea and sends a message to Richmond. What I need you guys to do is go to all those other red counties and sign them up. Thank you.
Now, we have Joshua Jennings.
Good evening, Board. My name is Joshua Jennings. I've lived in the bounds of Pennsylvania County all of my life. I currently reside in the Blair's-Chatham district, though I'm literally one street over from the Tunstall and the Westover district. The map, I don't know who drew it, but it's rough. I also operate a business, guns, gear, and ammo, NFL holder in the Tunstall district. All I can say is I hope the Board can and will designate this county as a Second Amendment sanctuary, stand on the founding fathers' principles. Governor Northam has insisted on attacking our very way of life here in the county. They want to undermine our culture. Northam is even threatening to outlaw teaching our minor children the joys and responsibilities of firearms ownership. Northam is recklessly and irresponsibly endangering both Virginia citizens and law enforcement deputies with proposed red flag laws. These laws will put deputies and law-abiding Virginia citizens at odds, and the Virginia citizens will be standing on constitutional ground. I applaud the politicians and the sheriffs who have already stood up for the Constitution and this Commonwealth and nation. I hope that you all will do the same, supporting the Second Amendment sanctuary status. These are the times that will define present-day statesmen and patriots. Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Matthews.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mark Matthews. I'm a retired firefighter and sheriff's deputy for two different counties in Virginia. I'm also a member of Virginia Oath Keepers, a Constitution educational organization that is comprised of active and inactive and retired veterans, law enforcement, and patriotic Virginians, whom have all taken the oath to the U.S. and Virginia constitutions. I have served in the organization as a membership coordinator, Southwest Regional Director, and Board of Directors. We are at a crossroads in America between those that wish to destroy our founding principles enshrined in the Declaration of Independence, the U.S. and Virginia constitutions, and the Bill of Rights, and those willing to fight to the death if necessary to keep the individual liberties we inherited for the benefit of our children. It is no secret, we're at war for our values. Socialism, communism, fascism, and any government form outside of the Constitution mentioned have no place in America in any fashion. The same goes with Islamic Sharia law, which is rapidly working its way into American politics. From an individual liberty standpoint, all of these are a dismal failure everywhere it's been used. I would like to remind everyone that the Second Amendment is not about hunting, nor self-defense for that matter, although that is a natural right. The Second Amendment was included in the Bill of Rights as a means to fight a tyrannical government that has lost its purpose and is hell-bent on destroying all of your God-given rights and natural rights. Banning firearms and accessories as a precursor to total confiscation, history has proven this many times. Red flag laws deny Fourth and Fifth Amendment due process requirements. Once firearms are banned from the general populace, you can kiss the rest of your protected rights goodbye, followed by an oligarchy or dictatorship. It is time to stand up to tyrants who wish to transform America into something that wasn't meant to be. I miss the America I once knew, but it makes my heart happy to know that there are still elected officials that follow the U.S. and Virginia constitutions and the patriotic public who will hold their feet to the fire to keep the fire of freedom burning in America. Guns do save lives all the time. They may also one day save our America. Thank you.
Now, we have Ken Talbot.
My name is Kenneth Talbot. I'm in the we prefer Grettona-Callens district. Thank you. I don't have any prepared remarks. I knew that the people would be very well-prepared to represent us, but there's one thing that is very important for you to do for the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We have we have lost any voice in the election of any statewide official. We, as individuals, can call and complain and write letters, but you can speak for the entire county, and your voice is a lot louder than ours as individuals. So I beg you, please, stand up, speak for the people of Pennsylvania County, create a Second Amendment sanctuary here, and help us preserve the Second Amendment and our great Constitution. Thank you.
The last one we have signed up to speak is Carl Byrd.
How y'all doing? My name's Carl Byrd. I live in Callens. I appreciate y'all listening to us tonight. Appreciate you being here. I'm supporting the amendment to or whatever y'all are passing to protect the Second Amendment. I support it. But I'd like for you to consider this. I graduated Chatham High School over here in 1979. Any given time of the year around hunting, you go there and there'd be pickup trucks with guns in the back. What's changed? Why could you have a 16, 17, 18-year-old, 19-year-old have a gun in their truck and nobody worried about it? When you saw the cops, it's because some kid got caught with pot and they called a cop. Now they have to have a cop there full-time. You can't carry a gun on there. What has happened to our country? What's changed since 1979? Well, it's this simple heart problem. You see, we have a heart problem in this nation. We're violent people, getting more violent. We tell a young woman, a mother, she could be 30 years old, had six children, my wife's back here behind me, she could have murdered any one of our six children, and I couldn't do anything but beg her not to. What kind of craziness have we got going on? Violence, violence. We tell a person they're not that valuable anymore, and we want to take away the rights for us to protect ourselves. That lady up here first, don't remember who she was, but she's she needs to be able to protect herself. When I took a gun course, didn't really need to because I'm retired Air Force, but regardless, I didn't know any better. I'm sitting in this class, I say, well, I might as well sit there. When I heard, they said it takes 45 minutes to get to us out in the county on average. Now, what good is 45 minutes? That the crime is over in 45 minutes. Our police do the best they can, but at the end of the day, we need to have these this protection for so that we can protect ourselves. My uncle used to call it an equalizer. We need to be able to protect ourselves from bad people, evil people. That's one reason. Another reason is the government. You know, I'm all for hunting, and I mean, I got land. I'm supposed to be a landowner, got land, and I'm hunting's good, but at the end of the day, the government's just going to over overpush and overpush and take away all our freedom. Red flag laws, this is silly. What law are we gonna pass that's gonna protect people from going into the school and shooting it up or the post office? There is no law. Bad people will always go find a gun, get a gun. The nuts in what's his name who blew up the thing, used fertilizer and diesel fuel and did more damage. I mean, you can't stop nuts from doing. What was it? The Boston Bombers used a pressure cooker with black powder. And then you take the guns up, they're taking a truck, and they'll run it through a crowd. Stop with these silly laws. Protect our rights. We need our rights, because what who do they come from? I know I've got eight seconds, but they come from God. They don't come from you guys. And that's what the founders said when they wanted to protect those things. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anyone else that has signed up to speak.
All right. We can move on to public hearings now, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, everyone that has spoken. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinances. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general welfare, public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Case one, public hearing, rezoning case R-19-032.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you may open the public hearing for case one.
I'll open this public hearing up at 7:48.
In case R-19-032, Sarah Smith has petitioned to rezone 0.213 of an acre located on Cascade Road in the Tunstall Election District from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential, Suburban, and Subdivision District to combine with an adjacent parcel of land already zoned R1. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to R1, then all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. Staff summary is in closing. Your Board Packet and Mr. Chairman, Ms. Sarah Smith is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Smith? Do you have anything you'd like to add, Madam? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak on this case, so you may close the public hearing.
I close this public hearing at 7:49. All right. What's the nature of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, case R-19-032, I'd like to make a motion. We rezone this property from A1 to R1. I'm very familiar with the property, and Fitz and I have been good with the zoning.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Barber and a second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further comments? Any discussion? Hearing none.
All right, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Ms. Smith, your property's been rezoned. Thank you. You can stay. If you don't, if you wouldn't like to go home, you can go home, but we appreciate you staying if you like. Thank you. So kind of.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could go ahead and move the sanctuary resolution up and allow these people to go home if they want? If that's all right with the county attorney?
Well, that's.
It's fine if the majority of the Senate wants to handle it now, it's totally a problem.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
They just did a motion to whatever you listed this, Kevin, 14 what?
It's 14C.
14C. Do you have a motion right now?
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We remove 14C to now.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barber. He got you, Mr. Warren. Second.
It was his suggestion.
Extremely close, just a hair.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-11-02, declaring Pennsylvania County, Virginia, a Second Amendment sanctuary.
All right. Now, we have a wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on.
We didn't vote on changing the order.
You need to vote on changing the.
Changing it from the back end? That's okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, how about let me out a little bit. So are we okay now? We're looking for an unanimous vote, correct? I mean, we're looking for a vote. We're looking for discussion first, right?
You have a motion and a second to handle 14C right now, so you just need to vote on that.
That's right.
And once you get that, then you can go and do a vote on the resolution.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to be clear that this is gonna require a roll call vote by Ms.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to move it. I'm gonna put that up right now. Okay. So go ahead and enter those.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote. I will now close the vote.
Yeah.
Little quick. I'm glad I didn't lead you down this path. We're going to get to that vote now. Glad to see you, Mr. Hagaman.
That's okay. Okay. Give me one second. I'm going to move the item, okay?
Yes, it's very hot.
So now this is the actual resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make my motion now, please?
You can make it now.
All right. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-11-02 declaring Pennsylvania County, Virginia a Second Amendment sanctuary.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Scarsen, a second by Mr. Blackstock. We have any further comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one point. I thank all the citizens for being here tonight. It was obvious from our work session that our feelings are the same as you all here. I would say one other thing. I think we need to also put in our message that our leaders at the state and federal level need to look at world history and realize that one of the leading things... One of the leading things that every bad dictator has done was take away the guns from its citizens. So this is a very serious thing that we face. So let's remind them, and I personally pledge to tell you that I will be in Richmond advocating against those motions during this session. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Dr. Miller.
Before we vote, I think I'd like to weigh in on this as well. And I had a couple of comments that I'm going to make. I too, well, years ago, I think back perhaps in the fifties, maybe the sixties, there was a gentleman that wrote a poem and it was titled, "I Too Am An American." And I just want to say that as a member of this county sixty, seventy years, I stand against and raise my vote against humanism, socialism, and communism. And I stand in full support of the Second Amendment. And I thank God for the privilege to serve as a Christian in public office.
Mr. Barber?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I was telling somebody here before the meeting, the last time I saw a crowd this big over here in the sixteen years I've been over, the prayer was attacked in the county and drew out a crowd. Now they're trying to attack our guns. That's one common bond we all share in this county. And I'll repeat something I said over there. Anybody that ain't common sense knows what this was about. It's total gun confiscation. It's just a foot in the door, and we all know that. So that's why I totally oppose it. And I said one thing over there too, Ronald Reagan, you see, freedom is one generation away from extinction, and this is a generation that could be extinct if we don't stand up for our rights.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scarsen.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to say is I appreciate all the support we're getting from you tonight, but we need you to do your part. I'm a life member of the NRA, but also I'm a member of the Virginia Citizens Defense League. You need to go out and at least, you know, get their newsletter, but I would join up and help us lobby against Richmond right now. You need to be willing to go to Richmond and fight for this because we have no other path right now. So you have to do your part as well. I know we're going to do it from this bench. We're going to try to do our best to protect our rights, but you need to do your part as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
We had an in-depth discussion earlier in the day concerning this particular issue, and I received numerous phone calls and emails and anybody... I'm from the Stanton River District, which is a rural district. My mom and dad, those families have been there for generations. We were farmers, and then as we moved away from the farm, I think probably I'm the last generation that will claim myself to be a little farmer. We grew up hunting, quail hunting. I followed my grandfather around from the time I was eight years old with a BB gun till he let me have a fourteen and then a twelve gauge. And he talked to me about being a good citizen and being a good person. And I never, I was one of those people that had a gun in my vehicle probably during hunting season in high school. I never thought about hurting anyone. And I'm concerned about the attacks on our way of living. And I look at my own now grandchildren and I just wonder where we're headed, and it scares me to death. The other thing as citizens I think you need to know and be aware of, Virginia's a Dillon Rule state, and one of the things that the Dillon Rule does, what the Dillon Rule does, is it allows, it doesn't allow local governments to willy-nilly tax you on, let's say, ball caps. We can't tonight decide that we're going to tax ball caps in Pennsylvania County because of the Dillon Rule. Well, our governor has mentioned changing the Dillon Rule to allow localities to establish their own laws concerning guns from locality to locality. And what that would do, if anybody travels now, and I travel quite a bit, I've been retired for a while, and I have a concealed weapons permit, I'm a retired law enforcement officer. When you go into certain states, they have rules, laws, that vary, that actually could make me a criminal by carrying a concealed weapon. If we allow that to happen in Virginia, if you have a neighboring county that puts a law on it books that you're not aware of and you get caught with a weapon, you could be in big trouble. I mean, this is the kind of thing that we're looking at. It's scary to me. So we need to, when you look, and I look at election night, at how many people voted, and we got a big crowd in this courtroom tonight, we got about sixty-three, sixty-four thousand people in this county. We need to become more active in rural Virginia. If we don't want northern Virginia to tell us what to do. We have got to get out and vote and quit being lazy as citizens because our rights are under attack. And I assure you, I didn't run for reelection. I feel like I pulled my turn in the barrel. But I want to enjoy my grandchildren, what time I have left, and I'll be an active citizen. But we have got to work together to protect our individual liberties and rights. I'm a veteran too, and I just see it eroding and it's scary. So thank you for coming out tonight. I feel like I'm so proud to be able to vote for this tonight. I've made a lot of votes on this board, and I can say without any kind of regret that this is probably one of the votes that I'll be most proud of.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to vote. I'm going to let my action be by the pressing this yes button in a few seconds, so I'm ready to give the people what they want.
All right. I would like to anchor in, being a former veteran as well. I've said enough, I think, and I know I did, in the work session. I may be getting a call from the governor. I look forward to that. I would appreciate talking to him face-to-face though, and without his Secret Service, because if I can't have a weapon, they can't have one either. Let me just say this in conclusion as far as what's been said already by the gentleman who came up last, I think it was Mr. Byrd. We don't have a gun problem in this country. If I cut this light out, what do we got? We got darkness. So we've taken God out of school, and I don't want to get up here and preach, but I'm going to just say it like it is. We've taken God out of school, we've taken prayer out of school, we've taken everything else. Well, guess what? When you take the light out, you're going to have darkness. And so a weapon to me, and I'll finish here, is just like the law. The law does two things, like I said earlier. It either protects you or it executes. That's all the law does. It's got no feelings, it's got no blood in it, no nothing. That's all it does. And a weapon, it either protects you or executes you. So an individual that wants to rob or whatever. So, and my interpretation is, we need to really get on our knees, and we got a God problem in this country. With all that said... And it goes right up to Richmond. There's where it's at. So with all that said, we have a motion, a second. Further discussion? I don't think so. It's enough. Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
You may be seated or if you'd like to retire, the Board holds you. Did I do the right thing there? Hope so.
Yeah, he's got them online too. You can do it online now too. Yes, if you go to Pennsylvania County GOP on Facebook, he's got them online too.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. Put your money where your money is. Yeah, big man, everybody do it.
Daycare provider. I don't know my head or what I'm doing.
This is the second chair of the legislature. As always, it always kind of leaves a wig around.
I can't remember what something crayons we did it in. Was it on the others? Exactly, they were on the others.
Didn't have very good trigger control. I got you.
This county together, knowing anything's God and guns, since I've been over here. Get them two issues, that'll get them. Did you hear that one I'm talking about too, about raising dog tags? Over there, right? That guy was talking about, you know, that's what K. Byrd voted off his board. You remember that? When they raised his dog, they told her not to do it. There's a bunch of crowd like this, and she done it. They voted her out. They went door to door and got everybody to do it. Don't mess with a man's dog with his gun.
Like I said, I'm not for business. I see if you're getting a good buck speaker, you're right.
You know, I don't even know how, how could they even go to your house, door to door and ask for a... How could they get them standing up now? This is, I think we're, you hit it for dark times.
The average, the state is only forty percent, so I guarantee they're sixty percent of the people that think about, you know, hunters or...
Oh, yeah, that's right. All right. I would like to move on with further business. I would like to carry back on. Ten B. We're going to other public hearings. Thank you. Each person addressing the Board on the public hearings, you'll step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the Board is affirmatively given. To extend the speakers a lot of time, absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. PCC Chapters Twenty-seven and Thirty-one. Mr. Christopher Slim, how you doing?
Boy makes me feel good, everybody laughing.
Mr. Hicks said they all come to see me tonight. This is kind of a technicality, what we need to do tonight. And this was oversight on my behalf, and I apologize for this. When we adopted the new Public Safety Ordinance a couple of months ago, we should have repealed Chapter Twenty-seven, which deals with, because all this stuff is in the new, they'll transfer it over to the new Chapter Eleven. We should have repealed the Chapter Thirty-one, which deals with fire prevention, allowing juvenile or youth to be volunteer, junior fireman, deals with recognizing our fire and EMS departments in our EMS billing, and then Chapter Twenty-seven, which also deals with control burns and burning the brush and so forth. All these things are listed, and in fact, we went in even better detail in the new Public Safety Ordinance. So we just need to repeal these and take them out.
Chairman, you can open the public hearing, and no one's signed up, then you can close the vote.
All right. I open this public hearing at eight zero nine, and I'm going to close the public hearing at eight oh nine. It's a pleasure to the Board.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the removal of Chapters Twenty-seven and Thirty-one from the Pennsylvania County Code.
Second. Motion by Mr. Scarsen, second by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
It passes unanimously, Mr. Slim.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business to address?
Yes, sir.
Okay, new business. Budget amendments. Mr. Vanderheide? Kimberly G.
Yes, you have several budget amendments to consider tonight for appropriation to the FY nineteen twenty county budget. One is for the FM Global Fire Prevention Equipment Grant. This grant is in the amount of $1,645, and it's to be used to equip the fire marshal vehicles with iPads, mobile printers, and mounts to stabilize the equipment in the vehicles. It does not require a local match. And also, Item B is a revitalization for Greater Gretna Trail Grant. This is monies that the RGG has been working vigorously to fundraise, to gather enough money to put in a trail in Gretna. The total is $80,000, but they have requested that Mark Moore, Director of Parks and Recreation, be the project manager of this grant, and so he is working with Connie Gibson, our procurement manager, in getting some bids together for that project. And so the money, we would be physical agents of that, and we have already received those funds into our coffers. So the county will not be putting any additional funds with this money. So there is absolutely no financial impact from the appropriation of these two grants. They just need to be added to the grants fund. And so that's what we would like as staff, for you all to consider tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget amendments and related appropriations as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Warren.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farmer. Have we got any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the RGG, I would just like to make the Board aware that this is a nonprofit group, that they have a vision of creating a walking trail within the town limits, and they've been fundraising for several years. But the need right now is just like Ms. Vanderheide said, you know, project management and oversight, which Mr. Moore is willing to assist with, and also the procurement of various things. So it's a great opportunity for our county to help support one of our local nonprofits.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any further discussion? All right. Motion made by Mr. Warren, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Let's see. Pennsylvania County School Bus Lease, Lease Approval. Ms. Kimberly G. Vanderheide.
So, this one pertains to the Pennsylvania County School Board. They recently entered a lease with First Citizens Bank to purchase eleven passenger buses. And as such, the Auditor of Public Accounts requires that the local governing body approve such financings. The Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended, does not allow for school boards to establish and maintain such accounts outside the county's treasurer's custody. As such, this lease will need to be maintained on the county's books, and an appropriation will need to be made to purchase the school buses. Um, so the school board went through the process of receiving bids, and, um, of course, First Citizen won that bid at the best interest rate of two point eighteen percent. And so that, the total amount that's being refin, or being financed for these buses is nine hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars, and it'll be financed for two years. The first payment has already been budgeted. It's in their, um, twenty twenty budget. And so next year's payment will be budgeted as well. So, for auditing purposes, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors ratify the attached lease and appropriate nine hundred and sixty-three thousand six twenty-eight thirty-five, which is the amount of the original lease plus the interest that has been earned on that money. And that's going to fund two-ten for the purpose of purchasing the eleven buses. And, um, they'll be accounted for in the treasurer's office.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to ratify the lease purchase agreement as presented, and to appropriate a total of nine hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars thirty-five cents to fund two-ten to cover the purchase, eleven buses for the county school board.
Motion by Mr. Warren.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farmer. Having further discussion?
Ms. Vanderheide, this is in keeping with the policy they set to, to continue to keep a rotation of the two hundred plus buses that they have to operate in order to cover almost a thousand square miles, correct?
Correct. That is correct. And so these payments, um, they probably won't have a lease next year unless they have another lease that falls off. So, it's not like additional money. It's monies that's already been done. But it's so that their fleet will stay relatively new. And some of these buses that are being replaced are really old and have lots and lots of miles on them.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Warren, a second by Mr. Farmer. No further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Carries unanimously, Mr. Vanderheide. Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen, appointments. WVEMS. Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. Our representative on the Western Virginia EMS Board's term is expiring. It was previously held by Mr. Tim Duffer, um, who was running the, uh, Regional Medical Service, uh, for Regional One prior to them shutting down. Uh, at the time, he was the most appropriate person to support us, but since his last appointment, uh, we have brought public sa, the public safety function in-house, and we're recommending that the board, um, appoint Public Safety Director Chris Slim to the West Virginia EMS Council.
We know that guy. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recommend that, um, Mr. Chris Slim, um, be appointed to the WVEMS post.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Dr. Miller. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Do I have a further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Uh, Mr. Slim carries it seven. Seven votes unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Slim, for being part of our great operation. Planning Commission, Banister District, Dr. Miller.
Yes, sir. I would like to place into creation the name of Mrs. Colette Henderson of Gretna, Virginia, Banister District, before the, um, Banister District Planning Commission Post.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, seconded by Dr., Mr. Barber.
Dr. Barber.
That's right, Dr. Barber. Ms. Colette Henderson. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries, Ms. Henderson. Last Department Industrial Development Authority, Westover District, Mr. Scares.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John W. Daniel, uh, to the IDA Board.
All right, motion by Mr. Scares.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barber.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a few comments. Uh, John Daniel is, uh, oh, sorry. Is the owner of Daniel Building Builders L-L-C located in Pennsylvania County. Has thirty-eight years of commercial construction experience, and has operated Daniel Builders LLC for the past fifteen years. I think he'll be a great addition to the IDA.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Any further comments? Discussion? All right, hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Mr. Daniels goes on unanimously voted in. Thank you. Item fourteen, do we have any matters from the work session?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Fire rescue.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what, are we ready for my motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to appoint the following members to the Fire Rescue Commission as discussed in the Fire Rescue Policies and Procedures Committee earlier today. Northeast Quadrant, Ben Meeks, Fire Rescue Representative. Keith Shrugs, Citizen Representative. In the Northwest Quadrant, Brian Garrett, Fire Rescue Representative. Chuck Angier, Citizen Representative. Southeast Quadrant, Tim Duffer, Fire Rescue Representative. Bert Sellers, Citizen Representative. And, uh, in the Southwest Quadrant, Brian Fox, Fire Rescue Representative, and Billy Talbot, Citizen Representative.
I have a motion by Mr. Scares. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren.
Who was in the Northeast again?
Ben Meeks.
Northeast Quadrant is Ben Meeks and Keith Shrugs.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Thoughts? I have a motion and a second. Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
It carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not on our agenda, but, um, we also need for you to appoint the board representative that will, uh, serve on this board until the new chairman appoints somebody else who will afford the same position. Isn't that correct, Chris?
Yes.
Why don't I just select him?
It must be.
Chris Slim. Okay. Do I have to do that today, counselor? I haven't had an opportunity to talk with anybody.
Are they planning to meet before the next one meeting? It's December, probably the need to.
We got some straws?
I thought you were just gonna throw me on there since I'm the chairman. Until next year.
Well, why don't you, Mr. Scares, Mr. Scares will take that position, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Do me a favor from now on. I got one more month. How about letting me know a little bit ahead of time, okay? Please.
Well, I will make the motion to appoint myself if that's, will help you out.
Well... You can't come off, I can assure you that, but, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, thank you for that. Mr. Slim. Appreciate that, um, I do. Uh, board member reports. Do we have any board member reports? Where, where be that at?
It's on your screen in front of you.
Oh, no. Yeah, it is. There it is, right there. But I don't see it right here. This is what I see. I do not see that. I see, anyway. Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, I can present this matter, sir. Uh, there's a memo in front of you from, uh, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Scares. And earlier today, they considered a request by the Health Department to carry over forty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars, uh, from the FY nineteen budget. Um, unfortunately, we had a lot of conversation about this for those that were there. And I accept responsibility. We were unable, or we, we absolutely forgot to make a formal recommendation. So, the full board this evening does not have a recommendation. Um, but committee members from the Finance Committee meeting may wish to, uh, offer the comments, um, from that meeting. But the Health Department specifically is asked that we take action up or down on their request.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the Health Department's carryover request in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
I have a motion by Mr. Warren. Second. Seconded by Mr. Scares. We have a further discussion?
Uh, just as a matter of discussion, for any board member that wasn't present during that time, um, it was identified that this year's budget was approximately seventy thousand dollars more than the Health Department, uh, was last year, and that this, uh, funds was derived from vacancies not being filled. And they did indicate that this current budget is sufficient to meet their needs. And meet those needs if all vacancies were filled. So, they couldn't really present a solid reason for us sending the forty-two thousand eight nineteen back to them.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there were two parts to this. The majority was vacancy savings, but I think the irony of the matter is there was eleven and a half thousand dollars that was available because the state of Virginia did not ante up the required match for the department. So, the eleven thousand five hundred dollars of extra was county money that was committed in excess of the commitment of the state of Virginia. So, they were unable to access our eleven thousand dollars because the state of Virginia did not fulfill their responsibility. And I'm bringing this up because of the ongoing frustration of lack of support for local government by, uh, our General Assembly. We continually are having the erosion of state support. And even in their own agencies, um, we're being asked to ante up when the state is unable to fulfill their obligation. And it's just an illustration that I'd like to point out as part of the frustration that this Board of Supervisors deals with every year at budget time.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Warren, and seconded by my, Mr. Scares. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
It's unanimous vote for the denial of that. Can we go on to fifteen? Sir.
Yes.
Board member reports. Uh, Mr. Mr. Barber?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, did you recognize the voice scout troop? I didn't.
Yeah, I'm getting to them. Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. I do appreciate it. I got that.
I can see them. All them big guys got up and I said, oh, thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, we got something for, we wanna mention them. Sure do. Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Oh, I, I really don't have nothing other than, tonight was a special type meeting for me. I love to see when the county comes together for an issue, a common issue, as I said. I'm proud everybody come out. Mr. Blackstone?
I'd just like to mention that, uh, the recent death, and we remember the family of W.C. Scruggs. Mr. Scruggs was a principal at Dan River and, uh, Gretna High School for many, many years, and was a leader in our community. And, uh, he recently passed away, uh, after an extended illness. And, uh, his family, I'd like for us to remember his family and their prayers and thoughts, and just remember W.C. and what he, what he, uh, contributed to our well-being.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Mr. Farmer?
I'd like to recognize Mr. Angier in the audience. Thank you for serving. You're on the commission. Um, and then also everyone who showed up this evening. Um, you know, sometimes you, you wonder if, if the people listen due to just the inactivity that we see. But I tell you, they, they did listen tonight, and they showed up. And I'm proud of the board for being the voice of the people tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Dr. Miller?
I am thankful for the opportunity to serve on a board where people look together and work together for the good of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Scares?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, Ron McMahon's coming off the IDA Board at the end of the month, and I just wanted to thank him for his service to the county. I know, uh, people like that are hard to come by, and I appreciate his service.
Thank you. Mr. Warren?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I only have, uh, two things. I'd like to request that our county administrator be sure that, uh, as soon as possible, that letters thanking those that submitted applications or resumes for any positions be sent, one, to results, but also a thank you for their willingness to serve, and encourage them to seek service in other areas because we have other opportunities. And lastly, um, I think it was a real testimony tonight, when I heard Ms. Vanderheide make the presentation, um, that the, uh, foundation or the nonprofit was requesting, uh, one of our own, Mark Moore, to have oversight of that project. I think it really speaks volumes to the quality of employees we have in here in Pennsylvania County. And, uh, I'm proud to serve on this board, but I'm proud to work with each and every one of them because I get to see it firsthand where the public don't always get to see it. Uh, we have a lot of stars and, uh, our employees, and they have really worked well together, it appears, uh, for the greater good, as Dr. Miller mentioned, for our citizens. And it's been a privilege to work with each and every one of you. Keep the good work up. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warren. I agree with you. I wanna thank our IT Department, Mr. Kevin Bumper, Joshua and Scott Budd. Did a great job tonight. I wanna thank Mr. Slim for his reappointment. I'd like to thank our staff, Ms. Vanderheide, and Mr. Richard Hicks. Mr. Moore, our law enforcement staff, always quietly standing by to take, uh, to help us out. Ms. Kalen, thank you. Mr. Sides. Naturally, our counselor, as well as the county administrator. I wanna thank Mr. Jerry Hagman for being here tonight. Uh, he left us a legacy. We miss him. Um, and he, we kinda wrote in on his coattails. And, uh, I think he left us a lot of good things for, for us to be successful in this county. And I wanna recognize our scout troop. Thank you so kindly for being here tonight, you young men. This is your future. You're looking at it. Not me, but this is your future. Mr. Smithman is a Eagle Scout. He doesn't mention that very often. I don't know how he got it, but he got it. So, anyway. And I also wanna thank the, see, is that the, is that the city administrator, you, young man back there with this thing I got? What is it? I forgot your name. Town manager. Thank you. I can't remember everything. I don't have it all together. And if anything was messed up tonight, I didn't have a thing to do with it. I'm just following orders and so. But I do appreciate the staff and everybody and everything that's been done. And, uh, I do appreciate everybody showing up tonight, as well as Ms. Hagman. Good to see you tonight. Yes, sir. And the county administrator. I'm getting to you two. I'm certainly, yes, sir. From the staff.
Thank you, sir. Um, I appreciate Mr. Warren's comments about our staff. We have an absolutely terrific group, um, and I'm proud to work with everyone. To that end, uh, we are very concerned about our workplace environment and providing a, an encouraging and wholesome place for folks to work and contribute to their community. and wholesome place for folks to work and contribute to their community. And that's why we have just begun our second annual employee satisfaction survey that all of our employees will be participating in, in the coming two weeks. We used it last year to identify places we could improve. We have worked hard in those areas, and, uh, we hope that, uh, there will be measurable improvement from the employees' perspective, and they will again help us identify areas for us to continue improving. Pennsylvania County is a great place to work. And I'm sure this young scouts have heard that they brought their burlap sacks, but Mr. Davis will be leading a snipe hunt.
That is correct.
Directly after the meeting, and that's all I have.
I never got them, never saw one. Counselor? I adjourn the meeting.